Item one, call the meeting to order and record with members present in the absence.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Here.
Item three, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern?
Both.
One, two. Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand is seventh day of April, 2015.
Item three, the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at a board meeting will be approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the following items. Three A, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
Have none.
Three B, minutes of the March 4th, 2015 special board meeting. Three C, approval of the treasury report on the status of funds and investments.
Steve, you want to read them all?
I think I'll just read them all and then let you come back. How's that?
That sounds good.
Okay. Approval, three D, approval of activity fund report. Three E, approval of the activity account fundraisers. Three F, approval of the enter account transfer in the activity account. Three G, approval of items declared as surplus property. Three H, approval of the child nutrition report. Three I, approval of function changes to appropriated funds.
I did not see any problems with the minutes of the last four weeks. Did anybody else pick up anything? Three C, the treasures report. You can see in the open investment ledger that Mr. Manny gives us that we're in good shape there. Really, we're still in the summary of financial activities. You can see that we've got still $7.2 million basically left, so we're in good shape at this point in time. Gross production was still up. It was about $299,000. I know, I was talking to Lynn earlier today that there are some schools that are seeing some big drops in the gross production, but we're not seeing it at this point in time. If you'll turn the next page. You can see the encumbrance comparison. We're spending a little bit more money this month because we have some large items that we will approve later on, but still, our revenue comparison is still up $3 million. Gross production is up over a million dollars compared to last year. So, really in good shape at this point in time with only, what, four months left to go in the calendar year. So... And we do have some big items that I will explain on the financials on this encumbrance list this month. I know it's pretty hard to say, but, you know, we are in good shape. And Mr. Manny does a great job getting our money invested too. Appreciate his influence. Activity fund report. You can see that the activities are in good shape. Part of my superintendent's report, I am going to tell you that the baseball and also football has been awarded $50,000 grant from Share Trust that they applied for. So that's reflected in this particular school activity fund. So, and those are dedicated for certain items. Football weights to go along with the new facility. Baseball is the new fence. Visitors dug out, and if there's enough money and so forth, maybe even a new press box and a new riff on the concession stand. So...
At the baseball?
At the baseball complex. So those would be those expenditures there. So...
And football, what was that for?
Weights. Did not realize how much weights cost. Back in the old days, we had one universal machine. Now every kid's got 50-pound weights, it seems like. Now, right coach?
It takes forever.
Now, how's that?
Chase State just ordered $800,000 worth of weights for their program.
How does that work? I mean, if I, would I walk in and make a request to you and then you would decide whether you would make a request then onto Share?
They don't have to go through me. They can go through Share themselves as an entity. They always check with me and so forth.
So, they can go directly to Share?
They can because Share has an application, as long as they fill that out. I will tell you that because of some of the fundraisers, that people have encouraged them to go to Share for these months.
Okay. Well, I think going to Share is a great idea. I think, though, they ought to all pass through you with your approval.
They do, but they can go.
But they don't have to.
No.
I think they should have to.
Yeah.
I don't think there ought to be any direct, as far as what we ask for as the Alba Independent School District. I think everything should come under your signature.
Okay.
And I think that's how most entities in my previous life worked.
Sure.
Is that, I mean, this would...
It separates them from the...
Well, it gives your stamp of approval and the approval...
And the reason why.
Right. So I think...
You know, both did visit with me. I was a little concerned about going to them about football because we'd already made plans to go complete the baseball project and so forth. And I did talk to a couple of members and they said, "Go ahead and apply for both of them at the same time." So, we do go through that process. It's just not mandatory, but they've always gone for me so far.
Should there be a policy?
Oh, I think maybe we can just take it to managerial rights of the superintendent to make sure that that happens. And again, we're very fortunate living in Alba that we have these entities and they are very willing to help us. I was really surprised if they told us to go ahead and do both of them at the same time.
That's awesome.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
They have, they have Project 802, which is basketball.
Yes, sir.
And then they have ladies' basketball and gold bug basketball. Are those three separate?
Those are three separate. Those came about when we had the first girls' labor auction, so we had to separate that money. So the money that they bring in for gates, concession, those types of things, that's a share account. That's the old account.
That's basketball, 802?
That's basketball, yes, sir. And then, when they go out and raise their own money for the labor auctions and so forth, then that's dedicated for that. So when they were wanting to buy individual things and so forth, they take it out of their individual accounts. If we're going to, let's say, to the regional basketball, both teams are going to eat, then we could take it out of that share account.
And you know about all, I mean, you know Becky and everything?
Becky keeps track of that.
And everything knows about that.
That's the 802?
Right.
Okay.
So, that's how that's evolved on that.
Okay. I'm just trying to get it straight here.
Sure.
If you'll see under that adjusting entries, look at basketball 802. That was everybody else's portion of basketball gate, those non-revenue, what we consider non-revenue sports. We took that much out and distributed to those other, that you had heard at the last board meeting.
Yeah.
So, part of that came back now.
Any questions on the activity count? We have one fundraiser cheerleaders to sell clothing. This helps pay for their summer camp, for their individual clothing, their expenses during the summer. I think we've been doing this the last three years, each and every spring, and they'll sell hats, t-shirts, hoodies, whatever clothing type of things. And so that's fundraising they've been doing and doesn't interfere with anything else.
What is a Vanclaw?
It's an organization.
Name of the company.
Name of the company. And then we just ordered the gold bug as, as the order to go out and pre-sell it.
Okay. Same clothing.
Right. And then, on the enter account transfer with the activity count, you can see from the football concessions, we've got that taken care of each organization. I might add that this year, we did not have to share with Northwestern because they didn't have the facilities. They still wanted us to have it, so we said, "Yeah, we'll do it, but we're not going to share with you this year." So with new facilities next year, we may have to share. And then, the after-prom, I believe, did all the Northwestern games, and they got all the concessions from the Northwestern games.
Now, they did just football, didn't they?
The after-prom?
Yeah.
Yes. And then on the back page, you'll look at basketball concessions and cheerleaders, those are the ninth grade ballgames. That's why they're low. And they just kind of sold popcorn and cokes and candy bars that you get full-fledged concessions, because usually we're out of there in a couple hours. So those organizations got that. And that doesn't count, again, on those dinners. Those go to the other organizations, and that's not reflected here. But that's what those clubs will get for selling its concession.
Does that money that they get from that, the selling dinners, does that just go into, like, their account?
Yes.
And, but, the offices is notified of how much they make and all of that? They, you know how much they make? What did, how?
They are to complete the fundraiser form and get it back to the board, and we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and reminded all of our principals that all fundraisers that are taking place needs to be completed and, and then you all will see how much money they're making on these different fundraisers. So that's still part of our procedure here for fundraisers. So if that was a class organization or whatever, then it should be in the future showing up so that you can see all that.
This football concessions was probably way down, wasn't it?
Yes, way down.
I would say way down.
Because we have usually paid more than $5,000.
Yeah. Because I was thinking there's not very many more ba, home basketball games and home football games. There wasn't very many home concessions.
Well, and they did such a great job out there with that tent and everything else, just to even be able to sell it.
Absolutely. It's better than nothing.
You know? And...
I would walk...
There are a couple of times when it was windy, it was blowing through that stench and cold, and it was miserable.
Awful.
Yeah. So, they did pretty well, to be real honest.
They did.
So those are the transfers in the activity account. Items surplus, basically all of the tennis court chain link fence, poles, lights, so forth, we need to declare surplus because of what our intentions are, and we need to get that completed prior to the Pete and Ruth Leslie Foundation starting any kind of construction up there on that.
Where's, where is all of this?
Right there on the tennis courts.
Okay.
Okay? And I went out and counted the light poles and walked off the yard of the chain link fence and aluminum pipe and so forth, so that's what we have there. Child nutrition. And again, we're, you know, just running a month behind so that Verlita can always get these in for the board meetings, but at this point in time, you look at your total expenditures up to February 27th, it's $154,909, and our incomes, $215,800. So, our child nutrition is doing very well, and again, it goes back to that free and reduce because, you know, federal reimbursement. We've had $158,000, so that looks like it's in good shape there.
How hard is it, how hard has it been to get families on free and reduced? Do you still have problems doing that?
Yeah, some. It's been, it was better this year because we've really stressed the importance of filling out the paperwork for that not being continued or not.
High school's probably the worst because they're not going to eat there, but they can still fill it out and we still get credit for it. And so they made a good emphasis on that this year, so they had more high school kids. And, you know, 1980, we were probably around 32% free and reduced, and we're probably up to 52% free and reduced now because our economics has changed so much in our school district. So we are getting more money from the federal and so forth. We also get a little bit of extra money that goes in to help us buy franks too each and every year. If you'll remember, we get about a $10,000 grant for fresh fruit and vegetables that offsets that a little bit. But we're in good shape there again. Okay, approval of function changes to the appropriate funds. Talking to Teri today, we had a lot of money in that 2511, which is the business office that we weren't going to use. So she's taken that $157,000 and decreased that fund and then increased the following funds because of insurance changes, because of some Title I money that we needed to receive. But, you know, in 312 program, that's all staff development, that we had to add some money because we sent, what, 14 people to STI conference somewhere in that neighborhood. We've also sent all of Longfellow to watch team.
Letters training.
Yeah. And Washington School, Juggo literacy first also. So there's been a lot of staff development that we've had to increase. And then, that 334, that's all insurance. And 335, that is supplemental title monies. And then, 368, that's part of our ACE technology that state requires us to do. And also, that is advanced placement, that we have advanced placement at the high school now in English, so that money needed to be added to that. Also some alternative ed to balance out. On the back sheet, we got an increase of $17,000 from the State Department in our Title I money, so that had to go in there. So that 511, 541, 587, that's all title money. And then Fund 12 is all co-op money to make and equalize all of that. And again, it's not even new monies. We're just changing monies from one area to the next to balance out. So it's all the same amount of money that we appropriated earlier, they're just putting them in the right program and functions to balance out later on. Part of that money for co-op and for staffing because we did pay the National Board stipends this year, and that was $5,000. And I believe we have nine National Board certified teachers in our school district, including the co-op. So that money was not in there originally, so Teri had to put money in there to take care of that.
Are we reimbursed that money?
No.
And it comes out of two different spots? Is there two different, is one of them capital mon, I mean, why, you've got two National Board stipends increases?
Well, I see one of them is for the co-op and one is for our district employees.
So these, this is a co-op here?
Yeah, that 12, that Fund 12 was all co-op.
Okay. Initially, the state was going to pay for that.
They're supposed to reimburse it a lot.
Yeah, but they're not.
National Board certification? Is it $5,000 per person? That can't be wrong. Not that much money.
When you wanted all that, they're not going to do that.
Okay.
We're just left holding the ground.
No, we don't have. But you're right. I'm sorry. They did reimburse us.
I think they did.
Yes, they did. You're right.
All the teachers this year?
Some years they do, some years they don't.
They don't always reimburse the full amount. We never know.
So we never get it in there right, so that's why we have to add to them.
Gotcha.
Some districts do, just give teachers what they spend through reimbursement.
Right.
That has happened before. They don't get the full amount.
It's not the mandatory $5,000, it's...
Right. You're right. And there's, there's a new change too, that after you've been certified, now you've got to jump through some more hoops and so forth. So it's not like what they said earlier that once you're certified, you're always certified. Now, they're going to go back and you're going to have to go through more and everything. But again, you know, it's still the same amount of money, but the biggest change, I guess, was that $17,000 that we did get from Title I. And you'll be able to see in the encumbrance register where we've purchased some iPads from Lincoln School and so forth for that, from that title money we got that spent. Any questions on any part of the consent agenda? Hey, Tim, would you bring a fan in here from the...
Did you feel the air come on or not?
Yeah, it's going to be a while, but if we can just circulate some air back here.
Was that out?
I can lonely it.
It's in now. I think it's in now.
It's right up there by the sink and all, that grate over there.
Is that right? I make the motion, I make the motion we approve three B through three I.
Second?
Parker?
Yes?
Slater?
Yes. Sorry, I was reading. Sorry.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Item four. Vote to approve or not to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for FY 2015. A General Fund 11, 11 through 765, with change orders 0 through 765, a payroll number $50,002 16 to $50,002 18, with payroll change orders $50,000 through $50,002 18, for a year-to-day total of $8,786,202.86. B Cooperative, Cooperative Education Fund, number 12, number 66 and 67, with change orders 1 through 67, and payroll change orders $50,000 through $50,011, for a year-to-day total of $566,448.79. C Building Fund number 21 and 34, with change orders number 1 through 33, and payroll change orders $50,000 through $50,003, for a year-to-day total of $166,078. And D Child Nutrition Fund number 22, with change orders 1 through 31, and payroll change orders $50,000 through $50,010, for a year-to-day total of $378,137.36.
Those are really nice ones. Champagne carbons.
You have all the papers in your locker.
All right, if we'll go to the general fund encumbrances, I'll try to highlight some. Purchase order 716, replace air conditioner in high school auditorium. You know, we had a bid from Luckinville for about $250,000, and so, you and Dean felt like we could do it with this. It doesn't replace all of the air conditioners, just the second biggest one there that we have, so we're still going to have to look at replacing the one that goes up on the states. But that's the cost for one air conditioner there. Also, 733, with some of the renovations at softball and baseball, we had a collapsed water line that went from the street to the concession stand, and that's the original water line. So I don't know that it cost us $10,000, but that's what we encumbered for that. Also, 737, we declared a couple vehicles surplus last month and with the trade-in, a 2015 Suburban to put into our fleet for $23,000. And then also, a 2015 Acadia with trade-in for $26,000. And I will tell you that every vehicle that we have is out tomorrow and need two more. These are the two weeks from hell for Richard Burton because of all the transportation because, you know, we've got TSA gone, we've got judging teams gone, we've got golf gone, we've got track going, and the Suburbans that are at the schools for the custodial use are even being used. So, it's amazing what we use. And then, 741, just a lot of problems with cameras at the high school, trying to get them fixed and so forth, and that's the cost at that point in time.
Is this to upgrade the cameras or is this...
Upgrade, but also just get them running again.
The security?
Yes.
Like the quality of the pictures or working?
A long day.
Tiffany Dayton? We questioned all the quality of the cameras and so forth, and so they came back and said it was our cable. So this is replacing cable because our cable wasn't the right. Now, this is part of the cameras also, okay, on some, but I'm going to tell you the majority of it's the cable. 749, bus security cameras. Our security cameras that we've had on all of our buses have not been audio and also not very good. So this is to put cameras on every bus we have, activity buses and so forth.
With audio?
With audio. Okay? 755, that's the iPad for Lincoln School that were purchased with the new Title I monies so that those next three are. Okay? Any other questions on that? Any other questions on that page? Those are the highlights I thought you might ask. Okay, on the second page, those are just normal payroll. Co-op, again, parent travel, pediatric medical contract. Early Dozer out of Building Fund, the little snow that we did have, cost us fifteen hundred dollars, and we could have school the next day. So those are the encumbrances at this point in time. Any questions on any of that?
I make the motion we approve for A, B, C, and D as stated.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Item five, principal's report.
Our enrollment number is pre-K, we're at eighteen, kindergarten one hundred and three, first grade ninety-four, total of two fifteen. I asked the teachers to put together some of our curriculum for writing, and they just sent me so much stuff to share with you, I won't share it all, but we are doing lots of writing at kindergarten, first grade, and pre-K, which is great. Some of the things that kindergarten shared with me is, they first start off with their hand writing without tears, which teaches our students how to write their letters correctly, so that when they move on to cursive, it's a natural transition. And then they move on to their daily fix-its. And their daily fix-its consist of, the teachers will put some sentences up on the board that aren't correct, like maybe the "I" won't be capitalized, there won't be a period, something will be misspelled that they have learned how to spell, and they have to write on their paper correctly. And they call that daily fix-its. They also do some journaling, and they put together a nice little journal that they send home at the end of the school year, where they can draw... They start off, the teachers will give them a subject, like from their story, and they'll, you know, start off, you know, Ducks Are Yellow, something pretty easy, draw a picture. And as they work through the year, as they progress through the year, it'll get a little bit more... And this is kindergarten, a little bit more complex in their story writing. And then they'll have a nice little journal to take home at the end of the school year. And all of the grade levels, pre-K can reverse to literacy stations. And one of the things that I know all of, well, kindergarten first doing their literacy station, is they'll find like a card with a picture, and then they look at the picture and they come up with their own story. They just talked about spiders can climb up a web, spiders hide from danger, and they can make more webs, and they draw a little picture. And I know pre-K, they'll, on their literacy stations, they'll work on just recognizing an S and drawing it over and over again. They do morning work, which is sentence scrambles, where the sentence will be scrambled together, and they'll put it in order the way it should read. And they do some sight word builder, or sentences. They're given the sight word that they have learned, and they have to write their own sentence, like this one, the sight word was "that," and she wrote "that bike is red." And then she was given the sentence pad, and she, her sentence was "I have a fat cat." Again, this is new kindergarten, they're able to write at a pretty good level at kindergarten. And this is some of the things that they might do for our hallway writing. They were given a spring break, and they wrote about their spring. And that's kindergarten.
Love the word flowers.
You know, and they're taught how to, yeah, how they sound things out at that age, that's how we do it. So they have some good writing skills. First grade, they do some dictation with their spelling words. Then they'll do some dictation where the teacher will give them a sentence with the spelling word in it, and they'll have to dictate it. They also do daily fix-its at a higher level. This is one that I thought was really cute. This one's called doodle loops. And they're given just a little doodle. And then what they do with that doodle is they imagine a picture. They take, so in here, there was these lines. He saw a tree, he drew a tree, and then he had to write a sentence. And this is like a five-minute exercise. Like the first minute, they look at the doodle, then they close their eyes, they draw their picture, and then they write the story. And they don't take a lot of time, but this is what they're able to get done in that time. And one thing I'll share with first graders, they'll do, when they do show and tell, they ask them to do more than just get up in front and talk about their show and tell, they ask them to write about it. So when they show their show and tell, they have written like a little story. This one wrote about, she must have gone to Disney World, and she brought a Disney World bracelet. And so she talked about the bracelet with the charms from the castle, Mickey and Mouse charm. And so this was her story about her show and tell. So they're taking show and tell to a whole new level of learning and writing. And they just gave me so, they so much stuff that I thought was so neat that they do. And see, here's a first grade. I don't know, that's still kindergarten. This is my first grade. They, this, and you can see that writing evolved. This was their workstation where she took a picture, and then this is her writing from that picture. You can see how that's evolved. So we do a lot of daily writing at Washington, and these, you know, these little ones are really capable of doing some pretty neat things.
Good.
At Longfellow, we have two hundred and eighteen students, fifty-five third, ninety-four second, sixty-nine pre-K. Those pre-K, some of those are counted twice because of our pre-K point five. So that number skewed a little bit. With our spellathon money, last year we purchased Soft Seven, which is a math program for our second, third grade students. It's basically a math race. And so with second grade students, you have an addition race, which they included in their state competitions last year, addition race. And then third grade students has a multiplication race. Our kids have really bought into it, and it is a very simple program. It's basically flashcards on a computer. But students get very quick at answering higher level addition and multiplication problems. It may be seventeen times fifteen, and they'll look at it, tap it out on the computer. And it's very impressive to watch. In our local competition, our second grade, our addition, Wyatt Tucker was our number one in our addition. Jared Law was two, and Cameron Gassford was three, and did a very, did a great job towards Soft Seven. In third grade, Daylin Malone won our multiplication competition. Daxton Williams was next, Kayden Nelson, and then Macy Knightier. Those were our top four in our local competition. And so basically, those students qualified for regionals. We had regionals at Woodward a couple of weeks ago, and Wyatt Tucker. I'm thinking that Wyatt's dad must be very involved. Wyatt Tucker won the regionals in addition, and so he's going on to our state competition, which is, I want to say May ninth. And then Daylin Malone finished sixth in multiplication, fifth in multiplication. So he is qualified for the state tournament. So on May ninth, we're taking those kids down to Oklahoma City in the Science, School of Math and Science, it's called. Okay, yeah, got it. And they're gonna compete in the state Soft Seven competition, much better than last year, because last year I had to take some kids to Stigler. And that's a long ways along. But very proud of our kids, very proud of our teachers, because they put some time in on this. Very interested, because we really didn't start it until second semester last year. Very interested to see if this affects our test scores. It's gonna be difficult to measure since it's their first test they take. However, the basics are what a lot of our kids struggle with. And so, and they may pick up the, they may pick up some of the higher level concepts, but then mess up on this, and then therefore miss a problem. And so this really hammers home the basics for us. Patty Step called me probably three straight years, and I finally got tired of telling her no. And we had some spellathon money, and we purchased it, and we're able to send this home to every kid. It's twenty-five dollars a computer, so we purchased it, and they sent us this. I believe Wyatt and Daylin each got, with their local competition, won an iPod Shuffle. And so it's really a neat deal of our building, and so the teachers have really bought in, the students love it. And so it's been fun.
Okay, we have a six to six fourth grade, seven to fifth grade, for a total of one hundred and thirty-nine. One of the things that language arts teachers did last month, well, last month, is we sat down and kind of continued to look at different ways to improve our writing scores. We feel like, we feel like that we really have made a lot of improvement on how we're solving that problem, that we need to do better. So one of the things we looked at, and I had actually looked at a couple of years ago, was called the Vantage Writing Program. And Vantage Writing is a program that will allow the students to keyboard in their writing, but then it also gives that teacher an opportunity to provide feedback with them. Vantage does a lot of the ACT, so we're hoping that if maybe that's the direction we go, we'll be right there, step to the game. And then even if it doesn't, we still feel like it will really improve our kids, how they're writing, their thought process, how they organize those thoughts. The teachers are really emphatic about, we need time to give feedback. And we're hoping that this will give us that extra time to do that. We don't want to take the writing process out, but doing some of that keyboarding, when you score, it's gonna maybe give us a truer score of where our students are at. So we're excited about using that program. Like I said, we had a language arts teacher, teachers and myself, we did a webinar about a month ago, and purchased that program, and we look forward to kind of implementing that in our school next year. I need to also, I want to recognize Mr. Hamilton. I've kind of been waiting to do that until we got all of our scores done. One of the things that we heard from the community and we listened to is we'd like to see students have an opportunity for an academic team. And Mr. Hamilton took that challenge on himself, and took some students over the chisel, and our students did a fantastic job. And Mr. Hamilton did a great job. He spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, really communicated well with all of our teachers. You know, they did this during the day, and they jumbled classes, and they all worked well to be able to do this. So thankful, we're all, I'm gonna read a couple of those kids' names, there were nine teams there. And you have to understand, I don't know that, it's been a long time since we've taken in students. They were second place out of nine teams. We had eleven students out of eighteen that scored in the top six. And we're talking about humanities, social studies, current events, science, language arts, and math. So we're really excited about that, and Mr. Hamilton is very excited about it. And it's something we want to look at, making that something a little bigger and better each year. You know, we've kind of had some growing pains with it, and learned some things that we want to do, and were told some things that we don't want to do again. So, and so we're gonna listen to those and hopefully improve on. Mr. Hamilton then kind of went out and did some legwork, and found some online academic testing for fourth grade. So we did an online academic team for fourth and fifth grade, and those students did well. We were kind of middle of the road, and all of them, again, kind of felt like, you know, Mr. Hamilton out there was always, and said, "Gosh, you know, we should have done better." And I said, "You know, it's your first time, we don't know what to expect." So the students, again, did great, represented our community and our school really well, and proud of all those students. We are going to recognize them at our monthly awards assembly with some notes for their participation.
Do we have all the equipment we need? I mean, like for, do you have the system where they buzz in on it?
Mr. Hamilton, it's actually, Mr. Hamilton is, has a, it's called CPS. It's kind of an older system that he is using right now as kind of a practice for state testing. Miss Eckhart actually purchased some buzzers. So we're gonna see kind of what fits for what works best, and then go from there.
At this school, we have, let's see here, two hundred and six total students, that's sixty-eight sixth graders, sixty-six seventh graders, and seventy-two, yeah, seventy-two eighth graders, for a total of two oh six. Tim talked a little bit last month about Think Through Math, and that's something that we use at the middle school also. Reason for enrichment in our, in our math classes. The, one of the reasons that we adopted Think Through Math was to help with our remediation, with our math remediation on students who are in the state testing. And I wanted to go back and see how that had affected what we do with our math testing. And as Tim explained, the Think Through Math gives you a pre-test, it takes those students and identifies their weaknesses and places them within the program where they need to be. Last year, I had sixteen students in math remediation. Four of those scored limited knowledge, and twelve scored unsatisfactory. So we use the Think Through Math for our remediation. And when we finished with testing last year, one of those from limited knowledge moved to categories to advanced. The other three moved from limited knowledge to proficient. Three of the unsatisfactory moved to proficient. Five of those moved up to limited knowledge, and four of the students stayed in unsatisfactory category, but their scores improved. So with that, it shows that, for me, that makes me feel like our program is working with our math remediation. And the goals that we have set at the middle school, to try to increase those test scores. All sixteen of those students improved. One of them went all the way from limited knowledge to, from limited knowledge to advanced, which I thought that was really impressive on that student's part. That student in particular bought into the whole system and went for it all the way, did really well. So I have twelve students in math remediation this year. We're really anxious to see if that trend continues, but we've been really successful with the Think Through Math in middle school, most of that trend has been, but hopefully that'll, that trend will continue.
Don't have anything for the high school since last month here. So retirements. Ron Field?
Could I ask them something, all of them? It kind of made me think with the tornado and more, you know, they're heading another school and everything, how through those things?
Our students, and I think that the others can tell you, we drill so much that it's kind of second nature. You know, we're required in preparation to cover drills in October, March for tornado and fire after fifteen days. And so our students drill so much, which I think is a good thing, that it's second nature. And you know, we talk to them about, you know, we always make sure they know it's drilling. And, you know, this is what we're gonna do, and everything will be all right in the future. So I, you know, I think I Christ before, but it's really our students drill so much at school that they're putting these...
And just crossing the street and...
Well, I think I'd have to do that before.
Yeah. We, you know, if a situation like that would arise, we will cross the street into the library, and our janitors carry the, you know, stop the traffic with the sign so we can get over there quickly. And we, we did that one in the fall. We've done, we actually done three in our building, had the tornado. And we did two in-house, because we made a few little changes, because we have such large numbers on how we're gonna put people in the bathrooms. And we've done the one across the street, and it works really well. They, they, we real quick, the judges know, and the kids are ready to go, so.
Can you even pack them in your living room?
Yes, I can, I was worried about that. You know, whenever it happens, whoever, whether it's Mrs. Schuber, Mrs. Fink in there, they do have to shove some stuff off to the side. But honestly, I was...
But honestly, I was concerned about that part, but we had plenty of them. And the pre-K kids are awesome, to be honest with you.
And they just, they just, when the bell rings, they, everybody does their thing, huh?
Well, and that's, one issue that we do have in my building is running a tornado drill with our new bells. You can't do a continuous bell on it. And so I have to, I ring the bell twice and tell them this is a tornado drill, you know, over the intercom. So we have to do it back.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you one on me. And my principal never, ever let me forget it. The fire bell rang and I took him to the basement.
We had, you know, nowadays you're okay, Lynda, because if the fire's in the opposite end, you took him to a safe place.
I, no, that was, that was not the situation.
That one on me is Coach Smith was going to a, or he called in in the morning, his daughter was sick. And we had a fire drill early in the morning. And so I set off our fire drill. And I go walk in the halls and I walk down to the gymnasium. We had a siren. I didn't know we had a siren. And I walked down there and she's standing there staring at the fire alarm, thinking that she'd accidentally pulled it something. And so she thinks that she did this on her own. And I apologized to her eight times. But she happened to be standing, walking by it and actually bumped it right when the alarm went off. And so she was convinced that she had done it herself.
How's it at the middle school?
We've actually doubled up our tornado drills at the middle school because we have two different plans. Our locker rooms are safe rooms. And if we have, that's our primary plan. If we have plenty of notice or plenty of forewarning, we take all of our students to the locker rooms and the gym. We have a secondary plan if we don't have as much time to get students down to the locker rooms, the safe rooms. We have designated secondary safe spots throughout the school. So we do one plan, we do one drill where we take all of our students, excuse me, to the gym and locker rooms. Then we do another drill where the students go to their designated safe areas throughout the school. So we're required to have two, but we actually have four because we have one of each semester for the primary and the secondary.
Okay, retirements. We have Ron Fields retiring at the end of this school year. Resignations. Jessica Wooden has resigned at the end of this school year. And also Cindy Shaffer, and she's working right now for the new Head Start program. So those are the retirements and resignations I have today. Reassignments. Shannon Drew resigned last month as middle school cheerleader. We're going to reassign her to the high school cheerleader. And she'll have some duties to perform for the middle school and the high school this summer. So she's going to have a couple because of that. Legislative updates. There's really not anything that is concrete at this point in time. So I'm not going to go through the what ifs or whatever. I did read this afternoon that legislators are thinking about getting into the rainy day fund. So we'll see how that is. And apparently there's five hundred and sixty-five million dollars in the rainy day fund now. So that might affect what's going on, but really haven't seen a whole lot of concrete type things. Communications. Again, our policy is that the superintendent acknowledges any receipts or any funds donated to the school. We did get a hundred thousand dollar donation from the Pete Roots Leslie Foundation since our last board meeting. And also Share Trust, football fifty thousand and baseball fifty thousand. Another thing, on the district school board meeting, will be the twenty-third in Shattuck. If you can sign that sheet tonight, then Becky will go online and get that taken care of for us. We'll leave here three forty-five and be at that early bird session. Strategic planning. Well, because of strategic planning, we've got the new indoor facility being built by the Pete Roots Leslie. We do have a survey completed. So when we get that cleaned up, then we will ask the lawyers to D. that over to the Pete Roots Leslie Foundation so they can complete that building. Greg still thinks he's going to get it completed by October. But the other things about our strategic planning, you know, we looked at the designs at Longfellow and adding sixteen classrooms. Concerned about the possibility of losing some playground areas. So we felt like maybe that we needed to cut back six classrooms at Longfellow and look at adding six classrooms at Washington to offset that. And to look at a full pre-K first grade learning center at Washington at a second through fifth grade. So we're in the process of getting those architectural designs and looking at that. So still a lot of good ideas coming out of that. You know, I think, Jane, you made a comment during one of our strategic, that one of these days that we're going to have to look at outside the box to recruit teachers, to retain teachers and so forth. We're seeing or hearing the need for daycare for our teachers. They're paying full amount during the summer to hold the space. If that's true, some of them may have to take the leading bathrooms for a year. So because of that, we're looking into what it takes to have a daycare center. And I got the paperwork from DHS today. So one of my elected principals is going to get to, get that and take care of that, complete it. No, not you, Tim, but.
You can't even go get a fan. I had to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll never hear the end of that.
I just could not resist.
But you know, I think we, we looked at, and there are like twenty teachers that have children that are having to pay a lot of money just during the summer just to retain. You know, if, if it had, if we're going to jump into it and if it's going to happen, the only place right now that we can do that is probably Lincoln. And kind of depends on what happens with this construction and what they're going to do in the future and so forth. But we're going to look at it because it's a serious problem for our teachers with the amount of pay that they have to pay and so forth. So that's one thing that stemmed about strategic planning. The other thing that we've been working on are the boot camps. Well, we know that we've got to have reading sufficiency at Longfellow this summer, so that's a given. But going through Pre and Roma and some questionnaires, Allison's got about twenty-five to thirty-five parents that are serious about kids coming back for a boot camp. If that happens, then we can run three different boot camps at Washington and also work with Woods County Coalition to offer them cold meals at lunch. Now, we won't pick kids up for the boot camp. But because of working with the Coalition and Upper Bound being part of the Coalition, we can get our old bus driver Pete Filps that works for Upper Bound this summer to pick those kids up that aren't in the boot camp, to bring them to Washington School so that we can do cold, you know, so we're covered with our own people working. And we've got three teachers that want to teach and so forth and run it five weeks, four days a week and doing some of those things. So these are all coming about. And these are all the things that are coming out from strategic planning. Maybe not that night, but maybe that next day when the principals meet, something brings up. Also, teachers are hearing about our strategic planning. They're getting information to the administrators and then we talk to them on a weekly basis. So a lot of things happen. So that's all I have on, on my communications and so forth. Anybody have any questions for me?
Okay, seven A. Discussion on Possible Board Action. Request from AEA to enter into win-win negotiations for Board of Education for 2015-2016 school year.
This is just something that we have to do each and every year to vote on this. We've been negotiating, I know, since nineteen eighty, probably prior to that. I would recommend that we go into win-win negotiations.
I make the motion we do the win-win negotiations with the classroom teachers.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
I.
Mark.
Yes.
Alice.
Aye.
Seven B. Discussion on Possible Board Action. Vote to approve or not to approve the addition of sixth grade basketball to the curriculum at Alvin Middle School for the 2015-2016 school year.
And again, this is one of the things that came out of strategic planning, people wanting to see us do in our school district. As administrators, we feel like that that may be what those sixth graders need to belong to the middle school. Because right now, they're, they're just kind of there by themselves. There are a lot of schools outside the Alvin District that are participating in Little League basketball. I don't think it'd be a lot of cost to the school district at this point in time. What'd you say, uniforms, thirty-five hundred dollars?
Thirty-five hundred dollars for uniforms.
So we want the possibility to look at adding this curriculum to the middle school, hoping that it will create a, more of a unison with all of the kids down there. And if it's successful, may look at further endeavors in the activities.
Would our own coaches, the coaches that we have already coached at sixth grade?
Yes.
And would they necessarily travel with the seventh and eighth grade and have games on the same day so there wouldn't be extra travel?
There might be some days that we coordinate like that, but I'm not sure on the schedule. We just have to get into that and see where we're at. Now, and that breaks up, brings up a really good point, too. And I think people are going to have to start realizing that we are having a problem with transportation and so forth. So even if you go out for a sport, you may not get to travel. Because we may have to limit fifteen kids, you know? Because a lot of people think if you go out, you automatically go, you know? And we may have to rotate kids on a travel. But because of our transportation and the lack of drivers, it may be to a point that we'd limit the number of kids that we take. I'm just saying that for, if Lynn does anything, that that may be something that they think about.
What about, what about, let's, let's say Fairview. Do they have a sixth grade team?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
And they play the same time as?
From, from the people that I've talked to with elementary basketball, sixth grade basketball, is that they try to have the majority of their season finished before you get into the bulk of the regular season for the other teams. In other words, Black Palm Creek's elementary basketball tournament is in early part of November, where we don't start playing until the latter part of November, or in high school, even the first part of December. So that it doesn't put such a burden on the coaches because most of the coaches coach all the way from, in a smaller school around, coach from high school all the way down through third and fourth grade. If you had a third and fourth grade game, and a fifth and sixth grade game, and then a seventh grade and an eighth grade game, you're talking about eight games in one day. And that's logistically not really possible.
Would that be an extra duty pay for that coach? Would he draw two extra duty pays then?
Just extra duty for the basketball.
He draws three.
I mean, if, I mean, if just.
He'd be a regular teacher and he'd teach it during the regular school hours. And then the extra pay, the extra duty would be like all of our other coaches where they travel and so forth.
Okay, but it wouldn't be more if we put another team onto him? I mean, it's just like.
Yes, it would be an additional extra duty contract.
He'd, he'd get, they would get paid three times. Girls' basketball, seventh grade girls' basketball, eighth grade girls' basketball, three times.
Well, our seventh and eighth grade stipend is together.
Yeah.
But, but they still play separately?
Right.
You're not, you're not, you're not giving them any advantage. What if you had, what if you had a seventh grade girls' coach coaching seventh grade and a different coach in eighth grade? You'd have two different salaries.
And kind of that's what we do with our middle school boys. We have one coach who is actually our head coach. And draws the head coach's salary. And the assistant coach is the seventh grade and he draws his assistant coach's salary.
So he's drawing two salaries, so.
The.
Head coach. He's one for the eighth grade and one assistant for the.
It's together, seventh and eighth grade.
But we just, we just feel like it's better, we have a, we have a head coach and an assistant coach. And one gets head coach pay, one gets, an assistant coach is stipend. But on the boys' side, what we've done is the head coach is coaching eighth grade and the assistant is coaching seventh grade. So he still gets his assistant's pay rather than the head coach's pay.
How many kids do you, do you think?
We're thinking probably plus to twenty, maybe a little bit more.
Twenty girls, twenty boys?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Larry, right now, middle school, middle school head coach, boys and girls, would get paid twenty-two hundred dollars to thirty-five hundred. So that's set at the ninth grade, okay? And the assistant gets paid a thousand to three thousand, okay? So the only thing that we would have to add would be a stipend for sixth grade. They're not going to get free, okay?
You said you'd like for this season to be done before you start?
Well, no, that, that's just the way a lot of, a lot of the smaller schools around, that we would try to schedule with, that's the way they do it. And I'd say they try to get it finished, they just start early so that they can get in six or eight games before the bulk of the other games start coming in. And every place has their ju, or, I'm sorry, has their elementary schedule finished before high school starts. Because like at Winoka, they, the head coach has, the high school head coach has basketball all the way down through the third grade. Because they finish their elementary schedule before the high school schedule starts. It overlaps a little bit with their middle school schedule.
They limit it to ten ball games and two tournaments?
Yes, and we would be looking at ten ball games and one tournament on the road.
So is this something that you would just be looking at for the first semester? And then in December they were done with athletics, or what is the plan?
We're going to keep those kids in an athletic class because of the, uh, activity, the physical, the physical aspect of it. We have a, uh, PE class for sixth graders right now, but. We have a, uh, P.E. class for sixth graders right now, but the class is so large that they don't get as much activity as we'd like them to get. So we think if we have these students that go to athletics, that's gonna give the ones that are in regular school even more opportunities and have more activities. And also the fact that we're looking maybe down the road at, you know, going full bore off the sixth grade.
Can you turn it off?
Somewhere else.
It's, it's, it's good.
That's good.
We just feel, we feel like.
They would be maintaining the physical education class also.
Right.
For a whole, the whole year, the whole sixth grade year.
Right, we're, we're wanting to kinda test it with basketball to start with and see logistically how it works and then move into some other sports, uh, down the road. We just feel like if you give those students a little bit more sense of belonging, because right now the sixth graders don't really have any extracurricular stuff. They have band or vocal and when it comes to the extracurricular things, they're really not involved. And, you know, we, we think it would help us, um, with our activities and our involvement with our sixth graders, just give them a little bit more sense of belonging.
And the parents want this?
Most of, well, everybody I've talked to does. I haven't had any dissenters that I've talked to. I've tried to talk to as many as I could, um, on students that will be sixth graders next year. And, uh, everybody I've talked to really would like to see us have school-sponsored athletics for sixth graders.
You know, one of the things I, I think of, and I saw this in, in my teaching, is the expectation of something exciting for the kids the next year.
Right.
And if we keep lowering that, I, I think that there's going to be less of a, an excitement and expectation of something special. I understand the point of, of, um, wanting them to belong and everything, but, um, just the, that expectation, I, I don't know what else to call it.
Right.
You know, I had little girls in second grade, um, wearing pantyhose and doing corsages, you know, um, for certain things. They were having dances in second grade, you know? But that ex- expectation, it's just, it was just like it's gonna happen every year and there was nothing exciting to look forward to.
And I think that ex- I think that expectation was there when we were true middle school, seventh, eighth, and ninth. Now that we're a middle school of six, seven, and eight, I think that's where we're losing kids at the sixth grade because they don't have that anticipation to be able to do that. But I wholeheartedly agree with you on what you're saying. But I, I, I really think that there's where some of those marginal kids are not getting that expectation of going to the middle school, so they're not doing as well as they've done at, at the elementary schools.
And I think we have a great rec program, I really do, but I don't think it's also something that every, every kid can take part in. And I think by us having it lower where we know who the coach is and we know what's being taught in that class. Uh, where a lot of times in the, in the rec stuff, you end up with parents and, and everybody that ever thinks they, everybody that's ever played thinks they can coach, you know? And, and so that, as a parent, if I still had young ones, I'd want it, I'd want it in schools, or at least I could get it, to be honest with you.
I do wanna commend the principals for listening. Um, I've, I've had a lot of feedback on the sixth grade, uh, athletics as well as the academics, so I commend both of you for, for listening.
Any other questions?
Well, is there ever, I mean, if something like this is put in and we look back in a year and say, that really wasn't a very good deal, um, is it ever removed?
Can be.
I mean, you know, I don't think, I think it'll be.
It's a curriculum item, so it can be.
Ken, this is a good example.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that'll.
You know, we cross country, we cross.
Okay, so, so things aren't there forever?
That was a cheap response. I think it's rolling.
We need a motion, we ready for one? I make a motion that we approve seven B.
Second. McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Seven C. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the addition of a legislative liaison for Alba Public School for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year.
Like, Jane, you're our liaison person.
I get the emails and I read them. There's a lot about charter schools this week, wasn't there? So I don't mind doing it again as long as you read it with me.
Absolutely. We do need a motion.
I move that we appoint Jane as, um, the legislative liaison for Alba Public Schools.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Seven D. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the contract with Cooperative Education Project for the evaluation and delivery of services to eligible preschool children with disabilities for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year.
And again, I would recommend that we do contract with Co-op. We've had a meeting and, um, all the schools that are in this Co-op are coming back this year, so that would be my recommendation to the board.
I move, um, to approve the cooperative program project for, um, eligible preschool children with disabilities for the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year. Second. I should just say seventeen.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye. Seven E. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the lease of bus to Bible Baptist Church of Alba for youth camp June eighth through the twelfth, two thousand fifteen. Group will travel to Black Mesa State Park near Canton, Oklahoma. Church will provide proof of insurance coverage.
And David requested this for the last three or four years and it met all of the stipulations and I would recommend to the board that this be approved also.
Still moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Seven F. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the request from Nick Brod and a student who traveled to Dallas, Texas, June fourteenth, nineteenth, two thousand fifteen for the national speech and debate contest. He's requesting use of one school vehicle.
Uh, Ganga Morde has, um, gone to the districts and has baked successfully and he will be at the nationals. I can't remember the last person we had go to national, but it's been a while. Three years ago? Uh, Ganga's an outstanding young man and does a great job and, uh, he will represent Alba High School very well and his sister never moved, we told her that. I would make that recommendation that Mr. Brod be granted this.
Still moved. Second.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye. Seven G. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the agreement with OKTLE for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year.
OKTLE is our teacher evaluation and this is our electronic, uh, evaluation system and I would recommend since the TLE is our evaluation instrument that we contract again for the electronic TLE.
Still moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Seven H. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve Ryan Wilson for summer lawn care at ten dollars per hour.
Steve Gale and Dusty Holland both have expressed that they do not wanna do this, so Ryan Wilson will do that. Uh, so I would like to recommend Ryan Wilson and also, uh, we, we need two people and I would like to look at a graduate student that's eighteen years of age to help them out and maybe possibly our, to work under the direction of Ryan Wilson for this summer if the board feels like that, if that's okay.
They just, they use our equipment?
They use our equipment. Uh, I did this out to a couple, uh, different entities and for the six months that we pretty much projected we're gonna have mowed, it was thirty thousand dollars. And we could pay Ryan Wilson our equipment and possibly a graduate student a lot cheaper than that. We would have to buy one more riding lawnmower because last year we found out part of the problem that we didn't get things mowed any time we fashioned it because when one was on the mower, the other one couldn't mow, 'cause there wasn't a mower available. So even with that, it'll be less money than hiring a service to contract out, so.
Now, can you buy the, uh, you can just go ahead and buy it, it just has to be approved by the board, the extra riding lawnmower or?
We can purchase that, yes, 'cause it's a hundred fifty thousand.
We. What kind of mower do you buy?
Uh, John Years.
Ten thousand dollar mower?
Uh, right at ten to twelve. You know, we made mistakes earlier when we were buying them and didn't give them heavy duty enough and found out that, uh, they didn't last as long. Uh, we tried to buy, uh, the mower that's a mulching blade so we don't have that dead grass laying in our, you know, and so forth, so. So we're looking at mulching a lot better, but.
Who supervises this? If, if something doesn't get mowed, who does that qualify?
Well, basically it comes back to me because the building principals or the custodians or whatever will let me know and then I have to go out and work and find and find out why and so forth. Uh, you know, part of the problems that we had with some of our, um, summer elk, they were in, uh, summer camps and things of that nature, I don't think we'll have it with this situation here, so. And also not having the equipment, you know? So I think we could do a, a better situation there.
When I, when I worked for the school, I always took Thursday and Friday and tried to do all the mowing, all day long.
It's a job.
Eight hours or ten hours, all day long.
Washington mows their own, right? 'Cause they, he doesn't like the way anybody else mows it, so.
Right.
That one's not in the picture, right?
You know, and I, I, I just mowed it a different way every time. One time I'd go this way, other time I'd go that way, the football field, and.
You know, and, uh, sometimes we mowed it too early and we, we need to mow it when it's hot. And then we need to clean up, the machines have a time to use.
That's right, every day.
Every day, wash that grass off. So we will have a little, uh, in-service on that.
I vote to approve seven H. Second.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye. Seven I. Proposed executive session to discuss rehiring certified staff listed on TACAC for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year. And be one resignation agreement for Jerry Warden and set salary for Jay Stephen Parker Superintendent for the two thousand fifty, two thousand sixteen fiscal year.